Hey team, welcome to another digging winning poker study session. And today we've got some awesome hands again, mainly of IC3 cards, who got some hands for us in the Bounty Builder 11, and from Ace with Face who plays those sitting goes. If you want me to review your hands, then be sure to submit your new hands down below in the comment section here below. And I will be reviewing those next week, Thursday, 7pm, sunup in the summertime. So be sure to do that. Let's get right into it. So here we've got King 7 suited, what a lovely name he's got, 3 ferkensjes. Basically means have 3 picks. Sure how you chose that name, to be honest. And we see a shove here from the hijack. So this is a bounty 11, so in all honesty, to be able to, in all honesty, to be able to solve those kinds of spots in bounties guys, what you need to do is you need to screenshot your table and your lobby. So you have all the required information. The required information is basically the bounty worth of every single player, and knowing how many people were in the tournament and are still in the tournament. Those are, that's the information you basically need to be able to calculate those spots in tools such as ICMI or Hold'em Resources Calculator. You can also get somewhat close by estimating those things, by looking at what the effort status is on the table. But they will of course never be as accurate if you just screenshot your table and the lobby. And of course it's really important to know how big of a bounty he has here. But yeah, in this spot, if we assume that this guy just has a starting stack, you know, 5k starting stack, so a little bit more than starting stack and starting bounty, then King 7 suited here is most likely a call here. And he did that, so. Seems like a good decision, unfortunately, he does not win as the 4 of hearts gets there, but it seems like the right thing to do here. He said, "Here I call for the bounty of King 7 suited", which I think is strong enough and people don't call wide enough in these spots. Filmmers also pretty active and aggro, that was... That's what made me call. Yeah, and I think people shove too much in those spots, like, people are actually supposed to open raise here way more than shoving, because it will show you such a high re fee than open shoving, because you will induce way more action. But yeah, people, people, people over shove. Also because you have less fold equity, you can also not shove as wide, or at least some combinations are worse to shove than others. For example, 5-4 suited or 7-6 suited will be, will be performing way worse here in a King 10 offsuit. Because people are gonna call wider because of the bounty, raw equity is way more important than, yeah, than suitedness and stuff. So here we've got pocket tens, and he says, "Here we first of all, first of course, call the 3 red on the flop." So let's get to the flop first. We open it up here in middle position, folds round to the big blind who decides to call. Flop comes 8-4 deuce rainbow, big blind checks. We of course c-bet a really dry board, would be c-betting here, probably our complete range also because he doesn't have hands like 8-4 offsuit, 8 deuce offsuit, 4 deuce offsuit. So we can definitely c-bet on this board a lot, and I would also size it up for failure. So yeah, instead of 1/3, I would definitely start using, like, you know, go to 2/3 or maybe even bigger, because he does not have more nuts than we do. We've got all the over pairs, he doesn't, he doesn't have aces, kings and queens, because he would be 3 betting that. We do have deuces, fours and eights, so does he though. But he doesn't have that many more 2 pair combinations, and he has so much trash in his range, that we have a really big range advantage here on this board, and thus I would definitely be sizing it up here. And also with tens and stuff, it's a little bit more vulnerable than, for example, aces and kings, because more overcards can come, so. I would personally be betting bigger here with the pocket tens. Now we do get check raised with the tens, I would be calling here, because like I said, we will be c-betting this board almost 100%. It could even be having some protection raises here with some 2-6 and 4x even, maybe sometimes even an 8x for such small sizing. And of course he has the common bluffs, like ace 5 suited, ace 3 suited, 7-5 suited, 7-6 suited, 6-5 suited, basically those gutters. So definitely we have to call here the check raise. Now the turn comes, a 6 of clubs, so some of his hands pick up extra equity. He says, "But with the 6 of clubs, he gets a lot of draws, and nonetheless, there are many better rivers still. So we 3 red on the turn to not let him draw there without risking his life." So we see a big continuation better on the turn, and you jam. Um, I'm not really a big fan of this. Reason why is because like you say, yes, he picked up a lot of equity, but by jamming here, we basically only gonna get called by better hands. All his ace 5 suited, 7-6, you know, all probably gonna fold here on the turn. Yes, we do deny equity, but those hands do not even have that much equity against our hand. So I would personally just be calling here with the tens on the turn, and allow him to still have bluffs on the river, whereas if you jam, we're only gonna get called by better. Happy says, "I don't mind re-raising this check raise on the flop." I think it's definitely possible, especially with tens that is a little bit more vulnerable. As a reason to do it with this SPR. I mean, it's definitely, like, if he has a little bit more chips already, I probably would prefer calling, like in all honesty, guys. If you play higher stakes, you know, it's a little bit more of an exploitative thing that Happy is mentioning here, because I think we don't really wanna go broke here too often. I think we mainly wanna call and allow him to have his bluffs. But he's mentioning that at lower stakes, people are more willing to go broke with, to go broke with their 8x and stuff, because they're gonna be afraid for overcards coming in. If we just call, we may miss failure when those overcards come. So this is basically what I think why Happy mentions that. But in general though, you wanna be calling here, but as an exploit, like if you know this guy is crazy, or like, you know, is willing to go broke very light, then probably raising is gonna be completely fine. But in general, I would, I would just be calling here, allowing him to have his bluffs, and the same applies here on the turn. Happy says, "Well, he has barely any nuts, even regulars will be over bluffing here with random backdoor flushes." That's true, so we also do deny some equity, so yeah, I don't, I don't mind the re-raise though. I don't mind it. But me personally, I would just be, I would just be calling here as a default. But I think, like you say, I think, I think re-raising over it would not be bad. I personally feel like he's a little bit too deep for that. But I think it's probably gonna be profitable. But yeah, I would definitely just start with betting bigger on the flop. And yeah, here on the turn, I would just call and keep his bluffs in. And now we just take it out. He said, "He also had an $8 bounty on his head, it's a better hit to take the risk and hope he doesn't get there, and bluffs river, or do we call off whatever river is?" Yeah, I would be calling, and I would be calling most rivers. Rivers that we don't wanna be calling on, it's probably gonna be a 3, it's gonna be a 7, it's gonna be an ace. Those are would be the rivers that I'm probably gonna be folding on. So here we've got ace king offsuit. See if you can explain what the forms are to bet here? We're betting just for failure, right? We're just betting his flop, like, like I already said, he doesn't have many... For example, universal bet, it's not a universal bet, it's just a failure bet. We wanna bet big, but sure, like, you can argue, okay, it's a universal bet, because we also get some 6 outers to fold, and we deny equity against King 5 stuff, but this is just a failure bet. Just a failure bet. I will be trying to mention that more often, Mauro. Thanks for notifying. Here the ace king, we open it up. He says, "Now over here, I know it's the right play and that we are just unlucky, but my question is, how wide can I reshove in this spot?" Open it up, the ace king, call, re-jam, and a fold. I mean, to be able to answer this guys, you just have to know all the information, and you should just put it in the Hold'em Resource Calculator or ICMI, to be able to know those spots. Now this is of course gonna be a common broke, but like, I cannot say like, "Oh, we can go with X% of hands", because I don't know what kind of bounty is. Like, he could have 5 starting bounties, he could have 10 starting bounties, he could have 1 starting bounty, you know? We currently don't know. That's why, for example, the run it up replay is better, because it does show the bounties, and boom player doesn't. So yeah, that's really crucial to know, to be able to answer this, this spot. I mean, I would, like, as a default, like, without knowing, we're probably still going broke if the ace queen offsuit. I think ace jack offsuit starts to depend on his bounty. Ace jack suited, we're probably always gonna go broke here, probably like ace plus. And this guy somehow tread with his aces, and the other guy's king is just unfortunate, for sure. Next hand is ace king again, says, "In my final hand of this journey, my question here is, is it better to just shove the turn?" I think, first of all, it would benefit you a lot from like, working from pre-flop to river, so also giving reasons, I mean, pre-flop here is pretty standard. But also giving reasons here on why you did what you did here on the flop. I think that will benefit you a lot, kinda the same thing I, I told Ace last week. So in case you guys haven't checked out the study session of previous week, I basically explained there why I think it's really important to clarify for yourself and other people why some of the standard things are standard to you. So that some hands that are in the same category, you recognize that they are in the same category, and thus it will be easier to adapt to different situations than just the situation that you've just studied. So here with the ace king, we of course wanna c-bet here. Like right now, you take half pot size, and you're like, "Okay, this is standard", while I think it's not gonna be the most optimal sizing to take. Reason why is because, like, like, right now, if you would give reasons why you bet this sizing, I would be able to help you with that as well. The reason why we wanna take a big sizing here is because first of all, we have a fairly big range advantage here versus the hijack. We have a really strong range, hijack also has somewhat of a strong range though. So we cannot c-bet 100%, but we actually can c-bet on this board quite a bit nonetheless. Yes, his range connects, connects on this board quite a bit, right? He has all those suited broadways and stuff. And it's actually a spot where I became apparently too nitty. I was like, "Okay, this is a board versus, you know, flatter, we're out of position, we don't wanna c-bet that much." And I started to, to, to bet here like 40%, whereas if I'm not mistaken, this is actually a board where we wanna be c-betting like 70, 60% on. So way more than I initially thought, and the reason why is because he's gonna have so many of those smaller pairs, 3s, 4s, 5s, 6s, 7s, 8s, 9s, that we can put pressure on, right? And we also deny equity against those queen 9s, jack 9s. Now of course, they're gonna call once, but they may not call twice, right? And if they do call once with the ace king, we do gain a lot of value. So we actually, this is actually a board where we can actually still c-bet quite a bit, and it's something that I noticed, that I was becoming too nitty, out of position as pre-flop aggressor. And that's why it's so important to, to study your play, and to, to continue to reflect on things and make notes, so you can look back on things when you're uncertain about certain spots. Something that I didn't do enough in the past, and I'm trying to push myself in doing that more. So here with the ace king, I really dislike half pot size bet. I, when I would be c-betting on this board, I would probably mainly use a bigger sizing here, heads up, when we're multi-way. We apparently wanna use more of a smaller sizing, it seems to be the case, so we can bet more. But yeah, I would definitely start sizing it up here. I would, I would just bet, you know, 8k, because all king x will be calling either way, king queen suited, king queen offsuit even, king jack suited, king nine suited. Sure, king 10 beats us, that sucks. Ace jack suited, ace queen suited, queen jack suited, queen nine suited, jack nine suited. It's all not gonna fold either way, so I would definitely bet bigger here. Ace 10, queen 10, jack 10, it's all gonna call once for sure, so we definitely wanna charge those hands and wanna bet bigger here with the ace king. And as Happy mentions, we also play the ace king here as 2 straight hands. By betting bigger here, we also set up a turn jam. If you bet here like 8k, there's gonna be 20k in this pot, or 19k, and if he calls, it's gonna be 24k, and we're gonna have around a pasta's bet left. Right now, if he just calls, we have a little bit of an awkward stack size, where we have 28k and it's 22k in the middle. So we miss value against those hands that are calling 1 street anyway, either way. And we set up an awkward stack to pot ratio here on the turn. So he says, "My question here is, is it better to shove turn?" So because we take a bad sizing here on the flop, we get this awkward spot on the turn. So that's why it is so important to, especially when you're more inexperienced, to work from pre-flop to flop to turn to river. Whereas if you're more experienced, you can go from river to turn to pre, to, to flop to, to pre-flop. Because if you notice there's a mistake on the turn, it's probably gonna be, you know, on the flop, and if there's a mistake on the flop, it's very often comes from wrong ranges pre-flop already. So you can work backwards, and if you notice, okay, the, the mistake is here on the turn, then you know, you can, it's, it's gonna save you time. Whereas if you work from pre-flop to river, there may not be a mistake pre-flop. I mean, there may not be a mistake on the flop, there may not be a mistake on the turn. And then you, you know, basically takes way more time, because now you need 3 actions or whatever. Whereas if you go from the river to, you know, work backwards, it's gonna save you time. But as to any inexperienced player, and it even includes me here, I would always advise to work from pre-flop to river, and not the other way around. Because if we would play this backwards, right? We would just be here on the turn and would be like, uh, yeah. I mean, right now, it would be apparent to me that we probably took a bad sizing here on the flop. But I hope that makes sense. So yeah, we definitely wanna make it bigger on the flop, and then yes, I would just be jamming the turn. As played now though, we are still gonna go broke. Against this weaker king x, and sucks TVS 10. Alright, let's get into the hands of Ace with Face. There we go, this is a 45 man, I think it is. It is a 50 cent sitting go. It's a 9 max, it's my bet. It's a 9 max, he says, "Pre undergun 2 opens, cut off calls, and I have the bottom ace 9 of hearts." Flating is gonna be fine, even squeezing would be an option, I think. Calling completely fine 2 though. Especially when you play against weaker opponents, you feel flating is very often going, going up. Whereas if you have really tough players behind, we definitely wanna be squeezing more, so we push out equity. And we, we, you know, prevent them from squeezing on us. He says, "It could be a nice pot of 3 bet though." Also denying some equity behind us, but all in office of 3x and a call, I'm not a fan of that. Fair enough. Flop, it checks to the cutoff, who bets small, and then decided to just call. Okay, he bet here, ace 9. Calling seems fine, allowing the other people to make some mistakes. It's also not that wet of a flop where we really wanna protect too much. Whereas if it was double suited, or it was 9, 6, 5, for example, it already gets a little bit more wet. I think calling is gonna be fine, I think raising would be fine 2 though. But it's completely fine to just call and allow the others to make mistakes. It's something that I saw in the video of Raise Your Heads, one of the updates, where you saw that was basically an open from hijack, button calls, and the big blind calls, and the flop was, for example, let me remember correctly. The flop was king, queen, 9, double suited, cutoff checked, button bet small, and then the big blind actually wants to call. Almost his complete range, almost wants to do no raising at all. Now we talk about king, queen, 9, double suited, which is extremely dynamic, extremely draw heavy, right? And still, the big blind wants to just call and allow other people to make mistakes, which was pretty interesting to me. So yeah, I think the same would be applying here too. He says, "I was just a bit afraid of giving undergun too good of a price to stick around and having 2 players in, and I have to slow down, give up on many cards." I, yeah, I completely understand that. That you don't wanna, you know, let them stick around with the king, queens and stuff. And that's why you wanna raise, I see a reason for that too. And I think, like I said, I think it would be completely fine. But I also like the idea of just calling and allowing people to stick around with their 4x and allowing them to make mistakes. I'm curious to, to hear what you guys think about that. It's still, like, multi-way is so tough to, to analyze stuff and use and solve, because there's another player involved, and the game 3 gets insanely big. If undergun calls of ace 6, that's really good for you, because if an ace comes, then they have top pair and you have 2 pair. Yeah, so I think, I think calling is pretty nice and allow people to make mistakes and stick around. So I think that's indeed one of the reasons why the solver likes to call a lot as well. But this is a little bit more of a newer topic to me as well, so we'll be keeping you guys up to date during those study sessions on, you know, when more information becomes available. So yeah. And of course, if you wanna, if you want to have the latest information, then I recommend to, a little bit of a ride hook here, but I recommend to sign up for the Raise Your Heads Masterclass, because it gets constantly updated, they constantly add new stuff. And yeah, be sure to use my codes as well, you can find them on my site. Anyway, we call here, and both big blind and middle position fold. Now the turn comes 8, and he continues really small again. As played, awkward situation also because he bet super small. I felt like I don't get called by much worse jamming the turn. But he still has king 9, queen 9, jack 9, 10 9, which are probably also calling, to be honest. So running it could be an option on turn. There are many bad river cards as well, and I feel like he would give up with bluffs on the river a lot anyway, if he doesn't get there. So would you guys be, what would you guys be doing here on the turn, while I'm gonna sip from my water? Would you guys run it here, would you guys call? Then you can jam for failure now versus 9x, prevent denying equity, uh, prevent missing value on overcards. It's fine. Yeah, I think this is a bigger sizing, yeah, I think, I think jamming is gonna be fine, to be honest. Like, we, like, if he folds queen 10, jack 10, then W as well. I think jack 10, queen 10, those type of hands are very often gonna give up the river anyway if it breaks, so. Yeah, I think jamming here would be completely fine, and calling is fine 2 though, and here it's W. He has queen jack, interesting that he continued with that on the river. Call, the flating range from cutoff is undergun 2, should have a lot of pocket pairs like 7-7 to 5-5. The thing is, he's not gonna double, like, if he's double barreling those, Mauro. If he's double barreling those, he's probably not gonna triple barrel them. He's probably not gonna, like, we're probably not gonna get any more failure out of those hands anyway on the river. So it's good that you mentioned that. I think first of all, it's somewhat unlikely he's double barreling them. It's possible though, but if he is, we're probably not gonna get more failure out of those hands anyway on the river by just calling. So yeah, I think, I think just running it here on the turn is, is completely fine. So we've got king, jack suited here in the cutoff, see a limp, we isolate, I like it. Undergun limbs, we had 27 big ones effective, Ace says. Don't like to just call here, right? I want to isolate limper. Also jamming is a bit too much, so make it 4x, and he called. Yeah, I think this is a spot where we definitely just wanna isolate. I don't think you have to make it that big, I think 150 will already do. Main benefit from raising here opposed to calling is because we just have such a good hand, where when he's gonna call, we dominate so much of his calling range. So definitely have, we wanna be raising here. I think smaller sizing would accomplish the same thing. Very often versus limbs, you can raise the same range you would normally open, so. That's a good flop, that works. And we decide to slow play it, let's see what he says. Flop in game, I decided to check the flop back. I find myself doing that a lot when flopping nuts, giving them a chance to put in some mon, to put in some money, but in hindsight, I would like to see a bet for myself here, because he still has a bunch of ace 6s. We don't block at all. Queen of club combinations, they call a few sets. Probably only 5-5 and ace ace trap, yep. And I assume even smaller pairs with a club call as well. So all in all, I think I start to lose some failure here. I completely agree, I think we just very often just wanna bet here for failure. I guess you can play it tricky, and maybe GTO even wants you to do so. But I think, I think in all honesty, on ace high flops, you probably just wanna bet here, small your whole range, at least you probably can. So yeah, I would definitely like to see it bet here on the flop. Curious to hear what you guys think though? But yeah, with also, especially in the lowest stakes, Ace, I mean, 50 cent tournaments, you just wanna, you just wanna go for failure. On the turn, I think there's a bad way to play the nut flush. No, I think checking is fine too, but I think, I think we just wanna, we just wanna bet and get all the money in by the river. Although this time, the stack to pot ratio is not gonna be too hot. But you already gave the reasons why I would personally like to bet. As played though, I would definitely start sizing it up here on the turn, and make sure we get all the money by the river. So here, I would definitely go towards 300 or 350, so we leave a pasta's bet here on the river. So yeah, that's now a little bit more awkward, but right now, it's over pot jam. So I think, I think if you decide to slow play this flop, we definitely wanna size it up on the turn for basically the same reasons why you wanna bet the flop. Ace 6 is calling anyway, a 10 is gonna call anyway on the turn too. Pairs with a club is probably gonna call anyway on the turn. So we definitely wanna size it up here on the turn, also because it is fairly polarized, right? Like, we either have a really good hand or we have completely nada. Nice hand though. And good thoughts, thanks for sharing those. Seen open here from the cutoff, we've got king, jack offsuit. He says, "Pre, I'm a fan of 3 bet heavy, smaller strategy, so I don't mind 3 betting here, but in this situation versus a, so far a small sample inactive hijack, 3x or 30 big ones, I decided to just call king, jack offsuit and play post." I would, I would still go for, for a 3 bet here, because it's a hand that is, as I really do not like to play out of position. Plus, even though he is fairly tight, he may still have, and I know you didn't include it, he may still have a very high fold of 3 bet stat. So if this played on side where you can still use a hut, it's definitely important to take that into consideration. So even when they are tight, if they still fold a lot versus 3 bets, it's still gonna be really profitable to 3 bet that. And also, it allows us to get away really simply when he, when he decides to fast play his hand. Especially in this lowest stakes, if it's a $1 tournament, if he has a hand like aces, kings, queens, jacks, probably is just gonna go broke. So it allows us to save some money. So yeah, I would like to 3 bet fold this hand. King, queen, I would probably, I mean, it's also fine to 3 bet fold. Anyway, as played, says, "I went for the check call, would like a check raise without a diamond more, and check call of a diamond in our hand." When we just flat here, we also have more 2 pairs, so I would assume we in general want to check raise more than check call, considering stack sizes as well. He bets still half pot, I mean, I would, to be honest, just call and keep his bluffs in. And I would be check raising hands that I would be fine going broke with. So I would be using hands like 6s and 4s, hands I would be going broke with. We're not check raising it too much, I would say. Also because we don't have that many suited connectors, we don't have jack 6 suited, 6 4 suited and stuff like that. I guess ace, jack and king, jack could definitely be hands that we can check raise to fulfill you. I think it's definitely possible. But we're such a, you know, stacked to pot ratio, I'm completely fine with just calling, and we're gonna be all in by the river anyway. But check raising would definitely not be bad. Turn is really awkward though. Says, "Turn, the queen of diamonds is one of the worst cards. They can come on the turn, and I don't see any incentive for us to bet out on the turn, definitely not." So check, we're willing to call a small turn bet. Even a bigger bet I would be calling though is, because he's still gonna have a lot of 1x diamond hands, still gonna have king 10, ace king, ace 10, 10 9. So we definitely call another bet also, because he could have some worse jack x, so he bets back here on the turn to then check back the river. So I would be calling any sizing here on the turn. But it goes check, check. River is of course jackpot, ching ching, and we definitely wanna be betting big here to, to also get failure out of his 7s, 8s, 9s and 10s, which are not always gonna bet the river, and as plus, we can use some club combinations that we floated. And definitely wanna make it bigger here, because it is really polarized. So I would go towards maybe even pot deep. Now we get raised, we call. It's a check, that's unfortunate. But that's how I would approach this hand. He said, "I bet out on the river targeting pairs like 10s, 9s, 8s, etc." Yep, wanna make it bigger though, wanna make it bigger. You already mentioned it in your review. Yep. Buck of 3s folds around to us, big button is sitting out, we of course open it up. Okay, we get called by the big blind apparently. And we flop a set, jackpot. We flop a set and I don't mind checking back sometimes to let him catch up, but we can also just bet target fluster us. Get value of his pairs and he checks King-X as well, get a 3 out of 2 of 3X, I'm not sure about our frequency here. This is a flop Ace where we just wanna be c-betting 100%. I would just c-bet 100% it's small. Don't make it fancy. People are just not gonna check raise often enough as they are supposed to. I would just bet here really small. Keep his range wide, he's still gonna have to call, club hands. He's even supposed to float some, uh, he's gonna fold a lot of suited Ace-6s. You know? Someone said, "I would just overbet." I don't see too much of a reason to overbet here, in all honesty. Because we just wanna keep his range wide. We wanna overbet, he's gonna start folding his D-6, you know? He's gonna fold, you know, his, his backdoor clubs. I would have, I'm pretty sure we don't wanna have any overbets here. Also, what bluffs would we like to use? You know? Also stacked to pot ratio, there's also no reason to overbet. So it's gonna create a really awkward dynamic. Also because a small bet is literally gonna accomplish the same thing with our, with our bluffs. We're targeting a stress, you know? So I wouldn't be splitting my range here. What are we gonna do? We're gonna, we're gonna bump it, reduce some of 3s and then some Ace-5 of clubs and Ace-4 of clubs? And Ace-5 and Ace-4 of diamonds as bluffs? See how narrow our range is? They can basically play perfect against that, right? So when we raise, we have an extremely knotted range. It's not a board we wanna be over potting. It's a board where we wanna be using mainly a small sizing to target his air to get, you know, his, his, for example, 9-8 of spades and his 8-7 and 8-6 of spades and 8, 8, you know, 6 of spades. To get all this stuff to fold. We just wanna bet small with our bluffs. And it's actually a board we can just bet small with our whole range. So I would also do that with our failure here. And just go straight for failure, Ace, keep things simple. Keep things simple. Turn, Phil decides to bet pot. We just wanna call, you know? Let, let him pass off with his, with his bluffs. Also, our, our hand doesn't need protection or anything. And he says, "Phil decides to bet pot in the 8 of hearts and usually as played, I would raise a bet here." And there's also a fluster present, but with a pot size bet from Phil, I lean more to just calling, letting all his bluffs in, yes. I guess, I guess a small sizing we can raise, but I would just never end up in the spot because we just always want to... Always want to, uh, get the flop here. As played, we just... So he, he pumps the turn and the river is a king. I mean, we also have almost no King-X because almost all our King-X want to bet the flop for failure. So his range here, as played, like, his calling range is gonna be extremely inelastic, right? All his bluffs are all folding anyway. So he's only gonna call 8X. I think D-6 is also probably always gonna fold. It's probably not even potting the turn, to be honest. So we basically targeting King-X that for some reason decides to check here, maybe to bluff cats against our diamonds or whatever. But he's gonna have loads of 8X, for example. So yeah, I would personally just shove here. Overbet sounds good too though, but like I said, there's no bad way to play the nuts. It's more interesting to decide what bluffs to go with overbet if you decide to do it. I would just not complicate things to make things complicated. Especially with this stack size, like, we're gonna get, if he bet, if he bet smaller than the flop and we size it up on the turn and we, you know? We're gonna get all the money anyway. We, we're just, we're just completely fine with keeping his range wide here, personally. So I would, I would bet small flop and think a big turn and just get it in by the river. Please let me know what you guys thought of this, of those hands, guys. I think they were really interesting. Really big props to, to Ace and Isotri Cross for sharing those hands with us and including their thoughts. A little note to Isotri Cross is I would personally like to see a little more of a detailed thought process on your hands. You know, it, it would take like a minute, you know, per hand to write down why, why you are doing certain things. And by doing that, you make it so much more clear to, to yourself why you're doing certain things. And by even doing that, you may already answer some things for yourself. Like Ace did this week, last week, he said a lot, "This is standard, this is standard." We pointed out to him, it's probably, you know, it would be better to clarify why it's standard to you. He started doing that. And by doing that, he basically already came to the river. Uh, to the river. He already came to the right solution very often himself already in his own analysis. Which is, you know, so good. You already, that already shows that he improves and learns from this, from analyzing those hands himself. And then by also getting those thoughts confirmed in study sessions or getting different perspectives or feedback on it, it only gives him more confidence in doing that. Plus, it will be way more likely it's gonna stick with him. So note to Isotri Cross and anyone else who's watching this video currently and is thinking about submitting hands, it only, it will only take you a minute to, first of all, upload a hand. It will take you maybe a minute to write some thoughts down. It doesn't have to be perfect, sometimes you're gonna be wrong. We make mistakes constantly, don't be afraid. Because the best way to learn and improve is if you work with your own hands and also if you are busy with it yourself first. It's gonna be way more likely it's gonna stick with you. So please bear that in mind. I hope you guys enjoyed this video and if you did, please, please, please be sure to leave a like. Feel free to comment down below your hands, feel free to give me feedback down below in the comments as well. Be sure to subscribe because there's lots of cool comment, uh, content coming up on this channel. Including some coaches will be on the study session with me. And I hope you guys enjoyed it once again. Thank you guys for watching. Be sure to subscribe and like and see you guys in the next video.